Calling the Tuesday, December 21st, 2021 Chapua Library Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag,
United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may be seated every moment. So it's the first day of winter and longest night. So hopefully this won't be the longest meeting. Public comments, any public comments?
If anyone would like to publicly comment, please just use the raise the hand icon and I can let you in.
Okay, so there are no public comments, I'm assuming, right Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, so first we have the acceptance of the minutes of November 16th, 2021. Everyone okay with the minutes?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Who's, who are we hearing? In the back?
I'm not sure.
Somebody, we're hearing background noise, so. So first, on my last president's report of the year and of my term, I want to first acknowledge the very generous donation of the Chapua Rotary Club. They donated $250 to the library. I also want to mention that the library received several honors this past month for the hiring and nurturing disabled workers. And Andrew attended and Shoray attended a presentation with our Assemblyman Chris Burdick earlier this month. And then there was a presentation and a proclamation of the town board. And last Friday was Chapua Library Day in the town. Our library has a long history of doing work like that and hiring staff. And I am particularly proud of that and it's so, and I know we'll continue to do that. So last month, at the end of November, I attended the Westchester Library System, had their annual meeting and their business meeting. And they, they said that our trustee, the trustee that represents the Chapua Library with the third district, Bernie Seiler, was leaving. And they did name a candidate that they had. And that candidate that they mentioned was Nishat Hadari. So I also now want to go over the past 15 months since I have been presiding officer of this board. I started along with our new director, Andrew Farber, which has been quite an adventure. And I want to summarize some of the majority of the board's accomplishments since October 2020. So one of the first things that we did that I'm particularly proud of is that when we needed to look for a new trustee, instead of picking somebody that we knew and without, we went and asked the community for people to apply. So we did community outreach, which I think is very important. Another major thing that this board did was we adopted several policies. In particular, the financial policies, the claims audit policy, which was very important since we were not in compliance with state law prior to that. We also adopted a pandemic policy, a safety plan. And tonight we'll be hopefully adopting the new code of, amended code of conduct policy. We did a lot of work, committee work. And we started a personnel committee. And the Personnel Committee has written and the board accepted a director job description and will be working on an assistant director job description as well. We also created a communications committee. And that's really important because one of my most important things when I first joined the board is I felt the library had to work on communicating with the public. And consequently, this committee has, as we know, is now working on branding of the library and with our work with two plus two that we recently approved. And we're also working on a website. The other committee that we started was the Centennial Committee, which will be helping the library celebrate our 100th birthday in June. The Buildings and Grounds Committee is, has done lots of work. The major accomplishment this year was the new roof, which was a lot of work and a lot of thought went into that. And now we're looking, that committee is looking at improvements to the grounds and the building to create more outdoor space for, and spaces for the public. Another committee we started was the Strategic Planning Committee. And we'll be hearing more about that later today. This board participated in two trustee governance workshops, which was new for this library board and for this library. And we are ahead of the game because in the future, every library trustee will have to have training. I think it's like two hours starting in 2023, two hours of training. So we were ahead of that and we, and it was a good experience for all of us. So while the pandemic was a challenge, I always say sometimes some COVID has had a silver lining for us because we were doing Zoom meetings and the meetings were being videotaped, were taped, and the public could watch them. And this is something that's been important to me as a trustee since I joined this board about filming our meetings and having transparency. And even when we had the in-person meetings, we continued to do them on Zoom so that the community could see what we're doing. And now all these meetings are archived on the website, which is really important for transparency. We amended the bylaws, which meant adding the committees that are really important work that the board does. Something else that I feel is, was a really great thing that we did is we hired a new law firm to represent the library board. And they, BSK is known for their and experienced in libraries. So we are lucky to have them. And if the board has noticed that immediately, just to give you an example of how good, great they are and not even just being responsive but proactive, within a short amount of time that the governor announced the mask mandate, we got an email from Chris Kurtz, one of the attorneys, to let us know about this. And we get regular notification from all the webinars that they do. And I know Andrew recently attended one of their webinars. So we are on the right track with the law firm. And let's see, we've strengthened our relationship, I think, with the friends of the library, which is always a great thing. We had a wonderful ribbon cutting ceremony to commemorate the end of the very long construction project and its completion. And the, another thing that we've done, this board has done is we've had presentations from different departments. We heard from the adult services, teen services. And tonight we are going to hear from the children's departments. Important for the community and for the board to know all the wonderful things that these departments are doing for the community. So we've worked as a team and this all had got done because of that and because of the cooperation of the board and the working with the staff and all the auxiliary people like our facilities consultant, our treasurer. And so it's really a team effort with communication among the trustees being so very important and valuable and crucial for the success of the board. So I'm grateful to have had this, to been the leader of this group for the past 15 months, which is a little longer than most presidents. But, and I am grateful for the support of the, my colleagues on the board. And so I want to thank all of you for that. So next we'll have our, our director's report.
Thank you, Ronnie. I'd just like to start by thanking you for your, your service as the library board president. I came on, I think, right after you took over as the president. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. You've really driven this, this board forward, made a lot of important changes. I'd like to thank the rest of the board for all of your support and hard work. You're all volunteers. You take a lot of time out of your day to work on the projects with the library, working with myself, with the committees. And I just want to thank you all for everything you've done. It's been a wonderful year. I'd also like to thank the friends of the Chapua Library for their support over the last year, all of their generous donations, helping us furnish our new spaces, such as the technology in the teen room, the furniture and benches in the children's room, and even projects such as additional materials for our learning center. So it's been a wonderful 2021. It's been a lot of hard work. Our staff's done absolutely excellent job as usual, and I just wanted to thank everybody. For my main report for Buildings and Grounds, we had our major potholes filled. They actually came today, which was a relief to me because the asphalt plant closes tomorrow. We really needed to get that, that finished. They were out there and did a nice job. The Buildings and Grounds Committee requested a proposal for Dibby Tong Chua to create a master plan for our outdoor space, which Bill will be talking about in a while. We've been working on the art gallery for coming art displays. We're in the process of booking new artists to start displaying artwork in that space again, which would be very nice. It's been out of commission due to COVID and due to the construction. And we're really excited to bring that back online. We're expecting our first show to be in February. Personnel, Lisa Brown has unfortunately submitted her resignation effective December 10th, 2021. She is continuing as a part-time available staff assistant while we're searching for her replacement. I'm recommending that we appoint Lisa Brown as a part-time available staff assistant effective December 11th, 2021, rate of $36.79 an hour. She'll be coming in once a week, usually on Sundays, to assist us with getting the bills prepared, the checks printed, and other, any other minor miscellaneous work, as well as assisting in training the new person when we're able to bring them on board. So if I could get a motion to appoint Lisa.
Can we do that during Personnel when we, first?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
We have to accept the resignation first.
Absolutely.
Where we can appoint her to that. So I have that to do during Personnel, okay?
Certainly, absolutely.
So we'll do that then, thanks.
Okay. The library is continuing to search for a part-time librarian to replace Nisafra on the adult reference desk. As Ronnie, you mentioned, we're recognized as an employer who's leading the way in hiring and nurturing employees with disabilities at Assemblyman Burdick's National Disability Employment Awareness Month Ceremony and at the Town of Newcastle's presentation. The library is currently planning on resuming our normal hours effective January 3rd, 2022. We will start opening at 9:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday and closing at 8:00 p.m. On Fridays, we'll be open from 9:00 to 6:00, and on Saturdays from 9:00 to 5:00. We'll remain open 1:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays. The Westchester Library System has begun the transition of our computer systems to their control. Currently, the adult computers have been replaced or functioning properly. The young adult computers were just replaced as well. Our mobile printing is currently working in both black and white color, which had been a problem for several months with our prior support company. They'll be working on the, the children's room next and then the staff. New York State has reintroduced an indoor mask mandate. The library will continue to require masks for all visitors over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status. We have ordered mobile hotspots to add to our technology lending program. They are currently backordered, but we expect them early next year. And Joan just alerted me that our statistics for our programs that are virtual, they have been viewed over 15,000 times this year alone. So our virtual programming is continuing to do incredibly well. And the, we are in the process of gathering all of our statistics to prepare for next year's New York State Annual Report. That is everything I have.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the presentation from the children's department. And so Andrew, can you bring Robin Freeman, the head of the children's department, in? And while you're bringing her in, I just want to mention something about the wonderful children's department. I got, it was sent to me as a personal email. The trust, a board member of Temple Beth El, who has a child in the threes program in their preschool, wrote to me about the wonderful experience his son's class had. They took the path down behind the temple into town and they came to the library. And Teresa read them a story and Robin read them a story. And then the teacher read them a story and they had just this wonderful experience. And it just warmed my heart, of course, to hear praise of our children's librarians. And he said that, that he was assured by the teacher that they would be doing this again because the kids just had a great time. So on that note, Robin Freeman, please tell us more about the fabulous children's department of the Chapua Library.
Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me here to talk about the children's room. To start with, I just want to highlight how lucky we are to have such a resourceful and dedicated staff in the children's room. This group has been adapting to changes from before the pandemic and throughout the construction project. And it, the, the folks that I work with have been so committed to making the service for patrons as seamless and as helpful as possible. So I, I just want to acknowledge what work has gone into making that happen. And so since we have been able to move into our wonderful new room, it's been a real joy to go back to regular in-person reference and all of the other ways that we're able to make connections with our patrons there, including our book lists, our displays, our, you know, passive art programs that we're doing in the room all the time. But we also, through the pandemic, learned a lot of new things that we were able to do. We started doing book request forums, doing three for three book recommendations, doing book bundles that made it easier for people to come in and browse really quickly. Those remain very popular, even though people can browse at leisure now. We also increased our book, our ebook collection a lot, including a wildly successful Sora Connect program that we started in May 2020 that allows all of the Chapua School District students to access the WLS materials, all of them through their Sora account with their school. All they need is their school ID instead of needing their own library card and their own Libby account. So that's been really successful and we're really proud of that. For this whole time, for years now, the children's room has had a really consistent focus on an inclusive collection. That means that we have been purchasing really intentionally. We've been weeding really intentionally, including and especially our nonfiction collection. We've been updating our lists. We've been doing spot audits on collections. We're revamping our world languages collection right now. And we have learned a lot in this, particularly in the pandemic time. And some of those changes are going to stay. We found that there's some great flexibility in Zoom programming. And we might continue to do that with some virtual storytimes, some virtual book clubs, things that allow people to participate in ways that are sometimes a little more accessible to them. And certainly, things like book bundles will continue doing. And some of our patrons still really love the curbside as well. So at the moment, our programming is a little more limited than it would normally be. But I want to give you an overview of what we are doing and then a little bit of a glimpse to what we hope we'll be able to do again sometime. Currently, we're offering courtyard storytime twice a week. We're also, we're offering a Zoom song circle once a week. And all three of them are very popular. We're doing grab and go crafts. We're doing our book clubs online. And we're doing community art projects, both in the library and things that people can take home. We are in fact, planning an in-person program with our Lunar New Year program at the Chapua Performing Arts Center. That has been a really popular and valued program in the past. And we are glad to be bringing that back. Over the summer, we were able to do some larger outdoor programs as well. We had a bubble truck, which was very, very popular. We had over 400 attendees for that program. We had an ice cream social. We did a Halloween storytelling program that was a lot of fun. And we've been doing community art projects for the last year or so. And when we are able to return to indoor in-person programming, we're really looking forward to being able to do more of our STEM programming again. We've done some regular engineering programs. We do a little science, little art that's for early childhood, science education. One of our very favorites to do is a program that we call Taking Things Apart, where we bring in mechanical items and we bring in tools and we let people figure out how stuff works and literally just take it apart and put some stuff back together. And it's a really great time. Our library laboratory programs, we have done cooking both on Zoom and in person. Both of those have been successful and we look forward to doing more of that as well. We'll return to crafts and to letterboxing, to our film programs, other large indoor programs like our talent show that we haven't been able to do. And for our early childhood, we do have some other programs that we've been able to do outside when the weather was better, like our storybook dance or our Room Room series of sort of storytime and play combined, as well as our multilingual Mother Goose program, which we're really hoping we can bring back as soon as we can do kind of a more intimate in-person program. We also have been working really hard with our school connections. Over the last few years, we have really strong relationships with the school librarians in the elementary and middle schools. And we're working to bring in the school administration so that we're better integrated and can serve the classroom teachers a little bit better. We can be more on their radar and have a better understanding of what they need at any given time. We were able to successfully adapt our regular summer reading visits at the end of the school year so that we were still able to reach kids and, and really touch base with those teachers at that time. But we're looking forward to doing that more throughout the year. We even have one of our librarians, Julianne Palasco, participating in an educator book club for Seven Bridges educators. And that's been a really nice tie-in for us this year. We've also been able to do a lot to support the PTAs in the schools. We participate in National Inclusive Schools Week and Autism Awareness Week and Read Across America Day. We just were doing some work with the Sustainability Committee at Bell. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue all of that. And as Ronnie was discussing, we have really lovely relationships with the local preschools as well. We're able to support the teachers and parents as well as participate in certain classroom activities and even be a field trip every once in a while. So in addition to those visits from beginning years, we also were, we're one of the organizations participating in the Friends preschool, their Peacemakers Program. We actually helped them originate that program, which has been very successful. And we're participating in that next month. We regularly participate in a pajama storytime at Play Care. And whenever we're able to return to our program room, we hope to return to our regular art installations that we used to do there, where the preschools bring art projects for us to put up on the walls. And then the kids get to come and see their artwork on display in the children's room. And we're always looking for new ways to strengthen those relationships so that we can benefit the schools, the students and the families. And, and now that we're in this wonderful new space, there are certain things that we can do to take advantage of it right now. We're really grateful to have a larger space that we can offer for people to read together and do a little bit of play together and to serve as a safe space for kids to come after school. We're looking forward to getting our computers so that we can help them use those for both educational and homework purposes and also to game with and have fun with. But there are other changes that, that are still to come for both pandemic and sort of construction purposes. We're looking forward to being able to build out that back corner a little bit more as an older elementary school space. And we need a little more furniture and a little more room to maneuver to make that work. But I think it's going to be really nice. It offers a little bit of privacy for those slightly older kids. But we do also have a satellite desk over there, just in case that ends up being slightly too much privacy on any given day. And we're also planning a little bit more furniture around near the window bench so that we're able to make that functional, both as kind of a cozy reading space and also potentially a collaborative working space for kids who are studying together. And soon, we hope, we'll be able to bring back our toys, our blocks, our puzzles, all of those early childhood activities that make the space near the courtyard really kind of a hub of activity. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to bring that back at some point relatively soon. And that is also another thing we're hoping for is a revitalized courtyard garden. We love doing gardening programs in there and making it accessible for kids to see what, what happens when you plant things and what happens over the course of a summer with vegetables and flowers and that sort of thing. So that's all stuff we're looking forward to doing again. And we're just really grateful to be in our space now so that we can start making those connections and rebuilding with folks that we have known for a long time or folks that are just joining the community. Does anyone have any questions about the children's room?
Any questions? That was quite a comprehensive overview of everything, Robin. And I personally, I just want to say, I'm delighted with the school connection and that Julianne's working with the staff. I think it's really important. And I think administrators, school administrators need to see the value of librarians, not just with how valuable you are, but for them to also then value their own school librarians. Because I'll be, having experience in this, a lot of administrators do not really see the value of the librarian. And I, I'm delighted to know that it's not that case in this school district and that you're working so cooperatively with them. I, that's commendable, so thank you.
Yeah, they are good.
I was gonna say, one quick question that I had is, I know there was previously, earlier this year, a lot of work going into, I guess, re-shelving all your materials which were in storage. Is that all now complete? And the children's room looks great. And so thank you for sharing with everything they have going on.
Yeah, thank you. It is, the vast, vast majority of it is complete. There are a couple of small sections of collections that we're still working on revamping. We want to put them out in pristine condition. So we're looking at some of our professional collections still. And we are still working on our world languages collection. And so not all of that is out yet, but everything else has, has been returned to the shelves.
Anyone else have questions or, or Robin, Liz?
So hi, Robin. Thank you so much. I was just going to ask you about the world languages collection because you mentioned earlier you're doing some revamping. Is that something you can elaborate on tonight?
Sure, yeah. So our world languages collection, as far as I can tell, it, you know, because it started well before my time, mostly has consisted of things that were donations from local families. And as a result, is a little bit haphazard, I'd say, and doesn't necessarily target the languages that are most used in our community. And so based on sort of our own survey of local families, census information and just anecdotally what we know we are asked about, we're looking at concentrating on four main languages to collect more heavily and to collect more intentionally across various reading levels. So that once we have, I think, still a relatively small but a substantive collection in those four languages, we'll then be able to have a better sense of what's actually being used most. So we don't necessarily have middle grade in each of those languages, for example. I'm not 100% sure how much of it will get used. But if we have something of a core collection, then we'll be able to start looking at real data, understanding what's being taken out. Is it our, you know, is it our picture books? Is it our early readers? Is it our middle grade for each language? And then we can collect more intentionally using that information.
That sounds good. I, I would, I don't know if there's a way to coordinate across the Westchester Library system, just because I would, you know, having a book on our shelf is a book for everybody in Westchester. So even if the language isn't predominant here, someone has to shelve it. So just to keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And from personal experience, I thought that the books that had a CD, the picture books with a CD accompaniment were really awesome because then you can hear the language. because then you can hear the language and read the book. So if it's not your language, it's accessible to, you know, if you're not a native speaker, you can play a native speaker speaking the language that you want your kid exposed to.
Yeah. CDs are a little bit harder to find these days. But we can probably find ways to highlight what's available, particularly in our digital collection, so that we can be pairing books with those spoken language versions. Yeah.
Any, anyone else have any questions or comments for Robin? Robin, thank you so much for joining us. Keep up the great work of, and your colleagues are doing great work too. And we are grateful also that you came and spoke to us this evening and happy.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks. Okay, so on to finance, the Treasurer's Report. We have the Treasurer's Report from Joe, very comprehensive. And it looks good. Is there anything that you want to tell us about it in particular, Joe? Or we'll move on to the next, to the approval of the bills?
No, there was nothing in particular. I know, I remember last, last month, I mentioned about that we were contemplating putting into the new money market all the money that we had allocated on our financials for, for the capital. But I don't think that that's going to happen that way, that we're going to be just dealing with a smaller amount that, that's, you know, designated for specific projects. So we're not going to be fully putting in everything that we have designated for capital into that new account.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so anyone have any questions about that or? So I'd like a motion to approve the November 2021 statement.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 November statement.
Anyone?
I'll second it.
Okay, Lane's second. All right, any questions about that? Comments? No?
Passing an increased capacity for vaccination. And we have the tools right now. We can vaccinate, we can move.
Okay, so if there are no questions or comments.
I.
Hi.
In this moment. Of course, you want to make sure.
Somebody has some sound on. It's interfering with our, okay. All right, let's review the capital fund. Any questions, comments about that? It looks like we've almost used up all the money, not used up, but allocated, used the most of the money that was in the cap for the roof. And soon we'll be reassigning that money for other tasks. So any questions about that? All right, so on to the, I'd like a motion to approve the December 2021 bills.
I'll make sure to approve the December 2021 bills.
Lane, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Liz's second. Any questions?
Really working out how to assess their own personal risk and what they're willing to risk. What I can say now, though, if you have been vaccinated, if you have been boosted, if you have been practicing those mitigations for the timely adoption of your travel, your risk is much lower. And in fact, you can get that extra reassurance by testing ahead of time.
What else? If you're celebrating with kids, you're really wrong. We're not.
Right, really important. So first of all, kids over five, we really want to.
Sure, I think it might be coming from, from your microphone. It looks like you've got a.
To the CDC, just as we reviewed the safety data that we've seen so far, the 6 million children who've been vaccinated to date. And it's really beautiful. It really demonstrates that extraordinary state vaccine, yes, our children are having.
I can't hear you, Cherie. I see you talking. You're not listed as muted.
That is demonstrating that their immune systems are working. As for the children who are under five, really the best way.
I just muted her and now we can't hear.
Is it possible you have another microphone in the house?
More people are boosted. You are seeing people test positive.
I just muted her. So that's, it's coming from Cherie. Show, somehow it's coming from you, Cherie. Now I unmuted you, but we can hear you. So maybe you need to re-log in. What do you think, Andrew?
That, that might help. I'm not sure what's going on. Oh, sure, Ray, if you click on the arrow up by mute, make sure your microphone is the proper microphone, your computer or your tablet, whatever you're using, may be picking up an incorrect device.
Also, if by any chance you have any other tabs open on your computer, that happens too. So maybe close any other tabs that are open.
Okay, I think she's going to come back in. So we'll just wait a minute. But didn't, nobody had any questions about the bills, right? So as soon as Cherie comes back in, we'll, we'll vote on it. Okay.
I don't know if you just said something, Cherie. I'm not hearing anything.
We're not hearing you, Cherie.
No, we're still not hearing you. It sounds like it's television in the background.
We're hearing something else. Okay. Just have to wait a minute and see what she's gonna do. We don't want to vote and we have, we should really wait for her. Technology friends.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, so we're going to take a vote on the, all in favor of approving the December 2021 bills?
I.
I.
Okay, very good. So now the GASP report. So we received that. That's something that gets done every two years. And I'd like to ask Joe to just give an explanation of what it is briefly, why it has to be done, and if there were any implications in the GASP report that we received that we need to be aware of. So, Joe, go.
Okay, I can appreciate why you may want to have this report explained. It's a very confusing report to start out with. But conceptually, the GASP 75 report is, is an estimated actuarial valuation of the library's post-employment benefits other than pensions. GASP is an acronym for Government Accounting Standards Board, which, which is a national body that sets the standards for government accounting and financial reporting. Generally, these standards, these are the standards that, that state and local governments, as well as school districts, use when preparing financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. GASP 75 defines the standards for defined benefit, OPEB, which is an acronym for other post-employment benefits that are provided to employees of state and local governments and, and school districts through the OPEB plans. GASP 75 requires local governments and school districts to report this total OPEB liability in their statement of net position, which is otherwise known as the balance sheet. These future estimated costs are not reflected in the income and expense statement. The OPB liabilities are accounted for in the same manner as our pension liabilities and are produced by actuarial valuations. The data is based on employee census information, such as compensation and age, and applying published municipal bond indices to these estimated future costs. Unlike pensions, there's, there's no requirement for the OPEB liabilities to be funded. And these actuarial studies often produce future liabilities, which are higher than initially expected. The, the estimates can be volatile from one study to the next due to demographics, such as people living longer, retiring earlier, changes in the level of benefits offered and increases in healthcare costs, as well as fluctuations in the discount rates that are applied to these factors. This is illustrated in the schedule of changes in, in the net OPEB liability, which is the first landscape statement in the, in the report. And you could, you could see there, unfortunately, these pages are not numbered. But the, you know, this liability was, you know, much higher back in 2018, 2019 than, than it is for 2021. So it just sort of illustrates the, you know, the fluctuations that can occur. The other thing is that, you know, these, so these liabilities are not anything that, that we have to be concerned about. They, it's, it's just required to be included in the, in the financial statements that, that, that are issued, the audited financial statements. And it's, as I mentioned, it's just trying to estimate what those future costs are. And obviously, they never have to be paid out all at once. And, you know, we just deal with them as we go, go forward year to year. So I don't know, you know, if anyone has any specific questions. A lot of the report really is just presenting different, you know, assumptions as to interest rates used to, you know, to factor out the, these, these costs and, and certain other census information, such as the total salaries and things of that sort.
Okay. Well, I thought it was important to go over it just because it's every two years. So we have the new board members that this is new to them. And we have a new director who never had to deal with this before too. So I thought it was, and it's a good refresher. I, you know, I've been on the board five, it's my fifth year. So I've heard about it. I understand what it is. And so, but it's good to just, and also for the public to know, like what was.
Right. Yeah, and if, you know, if there's any more, you know, specific detail, I would, I would venture to guess that Jeff, the partner of our auditing firm, would be better able to give more detail on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we could ask him. Thank you so much. So, thanks so much, Joe. Facilities Consultants Report. Bill, Link, you're on.
Yep, you're muted, Bill.
You're muted.
Okay, so we had a pump burnout in the mechanical room. It's now affecting the children's room, although the unit that was part of the expansion, the construction is, is picking up the load. But we still have to replace that motor and it's, it's been ordered. It's about a week away. We did have some problems with the pump that also feeds the theater that was rectified today. And we have heat on again in the theater. So right now, we're holding steady. There's really no noticeable problem. If we get down to zero, there will be a noticeable problem. So we're working to get that fixed as quick as possible. Andrew mentioned the parking lot that was done today. And, you know, it's not a perfect job. It never was intended to. It's just to try and get us through the, the winter season. We are working on the, the screens for in front of the radiators underneath the new benches. They should completely be complete by the end of the year. And then the big thing is the Divney Tongue and Schwab proposal. I believe, Andrew, everyone has a copy of that?
Yes, it was in the board pack.
Okay, I just want to bring mine up so I can see it. Okay, so basically he's broken this down into two projects. One is a site master plan. And there's no need for me to, to read it piece for piece. And then he also has a drainage channel maintenance plan. What I explained to Andrew today is there are other firms around. I already started writing a request for proposal. They could do the first part. They can do a site master plan. So maybe we should consider getting an additional proposal on that for just budgeting purposes. But I really don't know anyone that does the wetlands work, like Divney Tongue and Schwab. And they have a good proposal for the wetlands, the drainage channel maintenance. And he's got 25,000. And if you look down at item number three, you know, they're going to need a wetlands consultant, which will add another 12,000 to 15,000 to that 25. So I don't know if you want me to see if I can find someone else to do the channel maintenance drainage channel plan. I think that's a liability the way that's clogged up. I took a couple pictures of it again today. I can share them by email a little later after this meeting. But I, I'm looking for direction. Do you want me to try and find some more proposals for the drainage channel? And I certainly can get some other proposals.
For, I guess, for everybody's knowledge, just to make sure you understand what the issue at hand is. After the remnants of Ida came through, the creek along the parking lot filled with debris that all came from down the hill above us, essentially. Water that runs along the parking lot all the way towards the, the retainage pond before it goes underneath the road over to the town side. And so there's a real concern that if we don't do work and understand the water drainage, that we could, if there was another storm of similar size, we could end up with a flooded library because the drainage channel isn't draining properly. we could end up with a flooded library because the drainage channel isn't draining properly. And because that creek runs, we believe, all the way down probably to the Hudson through various places it is attributable to, to that you probably, it probably is considered wetlands. And you have to make sure you're doing it under all the proper permitting and, and guidance.
Yeah. As unlikely as it may seem that the, the Army Corps of Engineers may consider, consider that navigable waters. So, because it, it flows directly to the, the Hudson. So I'm just.
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to, just for comparison, to get some, another estimate for a site master plan. Just, I think that would, you know, make us understand like what this really would cost.
I, I, I agree. That would be prudent.
And then as far as the drainage channel maintenance, if you can't find someone that's, you know, relatively local to do this, then, you know, then they're like the, you know, the only source. So.
Right.
Ultimate, you know, in a way it would be good if it turns out that this is the, the way to go to have them do everything that would seem to work out. But I do think it's our responsibility to get other estimates. And then, you know, if it's, you know, then we can make a decision.
Okay.
But I, I just want a consensus of the board that this is agreeable, that this is how we want to move forward. Because Lane, the, you spoke on behalf of the, of your knowledge, plus of the Buildings and Grounds Committee and that, you know, this was necessary. And, you know, you pointed out some of the thing, the things that could happen if we don't deal with the problems of the creek. So how do, and so do we have a consensus to move forward with this? That we get the other estimate for the site master plan? If I don't hear any objections, I'm going to say.
Liz is raising her hand.
Yes, Liz, go.
It sounds to me like, Lane, you, you would consider this within the realm of an emergency where competitive bidding might not be necessary because of the, the necessity to fix this quickly? Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, if there's a second person that can bid the wetlands and the drainage, then it's, I would say let's have it bid by a second person. I, you know, it is, I would say more specific work than maybe everybody does. So, I mean, do we need to have it next week? No. Can we have it the next year? Yes. I, you know, I don't, it's not hurricane season currently. But I would say we probably want to at least have a good sense of where we're headed by hurricane season. Is that a fair time estimate?
Yeah, Andrew, oh, I'm sorry. Andrew, I just saw a, a couple photos to, from my phone to my email. If I hit share screen, can I share that then with the board?
You should be able to as a panelist, yes. If you can't, I'll promote you to co-host.
You have disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, try that now.
My follow-up would be just whether there would be funding through any of the infrastructure bills that are happening federally right now.
I will certainly look into any sort of grant funding for, for, for this, yes.
Okay. Is that displaying now?
Yes.
Yeah. You can see that this was a fairly wide stream. Everything to the right, that's all debris. And both sides actually is all debris. That was probably four feet wide, that channel at one point. And, and all the, the debris is just flowed down. Again, you could, a little different view here, but. So I, I'm very afraid, you can see the channel is just about a foot wide. A tree falls down in there and it's just going to all back up. And it's a, quite a swift flow. And then that's just going to go right through our parking lot and right out the front driveway. If, if that gets blocked up. So that's, that's my concern.
Well, it has to get done. It's just a matter of, I think Lane made a good point. I think the sooner we, you know, it doesn't have to be done next week, but I would like to, I think by, by the spring, it would be a good idea to have this done. So, and if you can find another agency that does this kind of work and you can get an estimate, fine. So.
I will give an interim report to Andrew and I'll have something at our next board meeting.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or? I don't, Lane, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that's, you know, the, the goal is to have, ultimately is to have a comprehensive plan for all of the grounds as one combined piece instead of trying to piecemeal it together. So having somebody who thinks about it holistically is, is to the benefit. And so that's, that's really the, the goal in terms of trying to find one person to help design that can touch all the different pieces. And, and if there's a different organization out there, that, then I think looking at different bids makes, makes good sense.
Right. Okay. So please take care of that, Bill.
We will move forward with it.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone have a happy holiday and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you as well, Bill.
Okay. So now personnel. So Andrew, we need to have a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Brown Staff Assistant effective December tenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion for that? Anyone?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Brown effective December tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Lisa Brown Staff Assistant.
Stat, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Brown as Staff Assistant effective December tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
I'll second.
All right. Okay. Show Ray's second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Now, Andrew, we can do the other motion. I need a motion to appoint Lisa Brown, hard time available, staff assistant at a rate of thirty-six seventy-nine an hour.
I'll make that November eleventh, as you stated it.
It's September. Okay. Do I have a second for that motion? I'll second it if nobody wants to. Okay. All in favor?
What, what, quick question. Is that the same rate that we were paying her prior?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carried. Okay. Now on to Policy Committee. So we made some, we're going to vote on the policy, the Code of Conduct policy. The main thing that was, we edited or added was the video and photography section. And then Andrew, you want to, Liz had asked if we want to get into the, what Liz had asked now with the penalties.
Yes. Liz, you had asked me to reach out to the lawyer to discuss the enforcement, specifically if we should have set periods of time. We were advised that we should absolutely not do that. We should keep it very general so that we have the ability to react accordingly to the different situations, especially since the goal of this is not to ban people, but it's to explain to them what, what it is they should be doing. Banning somebody should be the last resort of the library. So the bond, showing King said, we really should keep it the way we have it now and not put specific, because it really pigeonholes you. And, you know, if someone is, is having some sort of incident or issue, and it says you have to, you know, they will be banned for this, you have to go with that, whereas by keeping it general like this, you can, you have the discretion to, to react accordingly.
So can I have a motion to approve the amended patron conduct policy? Anyone? Nobody want?
I'll make a motion to.
Patron conduct. Okay. Do I have a second? I'll second this. All right. Show Ray's seconding. Any questions? Probably Andrew answered your questions, Liz, already. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Now the Centennial Committee. Show Ray, go.
The Centennial, Centennial Committee has met two times and the idea is to come up with a vision for the celebration of the hundredth anniversary of the library. And it seems the, the staff is on board to have programs and activities leading up to June twenty-seventh, which is the actual birthday. There are a number of creative ideas represented and the community organization, as well as general residents of the town would be engaged in these activities. So that's very exciting. And as we sort of finalize some of these plans, let the board know.
Right. And we'll be sending out a press release to the community early in, early in the new year to let them know that we're having this big celebration. So, so that's that. Andrew, do you want to add anything to that?
Just that we're very excited to be doing this. I think we've come up with some good, we're in a good starting place with ideas. And we've really had a lot of buy-in from our department, different departments of the library. Excited that we're able to do this this year.
So that's good. Okay. Next, the Communications Committee. We have not met, but we will say that the branding work has started with two plus two. Actually, the Communications Committee, Shoray and I were interviewed by them, by Alex and Alex. And then they, Alex and Alex also came to the library for a tour last week. And I know they met with Tao and Andrew and they'll be interviewing other staff. And we're very excited about the, working with them and what the outcome will be. So that's very good. And now, if there's nothing else about that, Andrew, the strategic plan.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Then I just want to say a huge thank you to every member of that committee and the hard work and the hours that were put into it. So, Andrew, go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to really start by thanking the committee. We brought in members from the community, the staff, the board, and have been working very, very hard on this strategic plan. We have done research throughout the community, interviews, surveys, internal data from the library and have spent significant time and effort going through that, parsing this out and then determining the library's, our vision for the library's priorities for the next five years. One of the first things that came up over and over and over again of the interviews, staff and, or, or the survey, was a focus on diversity, equity and inclusion. That, that came up on the short answers, the open-ended questions we were asking. And really, that was probably the largest thing we heard, which also then ties into all, all of our other goals. Community engagement is a priority. As you've heard, our staff is already working with the community, but we want to strengthen that work and continue to grow that. Library services. That is the collection, our staff, our programming, that came up quite a bit. Sustainability for the library, that is also mentioned over and over again in the community. And lastly, space and infrastructure. As you heard, we're working to develop an outdoor master plan to work on the, the actual physical space, such as the drainage of that creek. But it also deals with our technology and infrastructure. We're in the process of working on that right now as it is. But we're going to, we're obviously going to need to continue that. And there are several areas of the library that will be work as well. So we're, we will be expanding based on our input, any input we get from the board today and continuing our work. We will be expanding our performance measurements, listing specific goals. I know, for example, in the space and infrastructure, we'll be mentioning explicitly the outdoor space, the theater that needs work. So we'll put together that list. A lot of that information will be coming from the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We've already met and started discussing the priorities. Again, it's been, it's been an eye-opening experience working on this. I am thrilled that we were able to expand on the strategic plan that had been developed by the library five years ago and really change it from a, a, a list of, of projects they wanted to work on to more of a strategic plan that's looking to help guide the library going forward. Michelle, I don't know if you, anything you'd like to add or Nishat or Liz? You all worked tirelessly on this. In the last month, we've probably met five or six times, as well as multiple phone calls, email chains and iterations of the plan back and forth.
Michelle, did you want to say anything? Or Liz, Nishat?
I know.
I would just add that it was really a pleasure getting to work closely with the library staff and yourself and Tao and your leadership. And I really appreciated all of the staff's efforts and their intimate knowledge of the library. This is a unique year where they have been here longer than their management team and they really did a great job of, of really speaking to what has been prior to COVID, during COVID and helping to shape the, the future. So that, it was a really nice, nice opportunity for me as a trustee to see everybody working together on this and I really appreciated that.
And Kathy is also out there and Kathy.
Yes, Kathy's in there. Kathy.
Teen librarian Kathy Paulson. If you'd like to say anything, please let us know and we'll bring you in to speak.
We just have an incredible staff, Ronnie. It's amazing.
I know. I always say that. And, and I'll just say this, when we met with Alex and Alex, I said the most important resource that this library has is its staff. And I really believe that. And, you know, as one, a former president of New York Public Library once said, "The most important recess of the resources of the library goes home every night." And that's the truth. So that's what makes it what it is. So, so I agree with you a hundred percent, Liz, to say the least. So, anyway, anyone else? So what we're going to do then with this is, will be, actually, I'll just say this. I, I, when I saw the, the copy of this, I saw my name as being on the committee. And I said, well, I really wasn't on the committee. And Andrew said, yes, you're the ex officio. So I thought, well, okay, if I'm on this committee, I have to do some real work on it. So I volunteered to edit and all the, the text for this. So, because that's one of my skills. So I feel like I've earned my place on the list of the, of the members of the committee. Because everyone has done a lot of work, so I'll at least put my bid in for that. So, anyone have any questions? Shoray or Lane, because you weren't involved with this. Lane? I'm having trouble hearing you with this like an echoey sound.
I know Lane was in on her cellphone, so she may be in a bad cellphone area. So we should give her a moment, see if it comes back.
We can't, we really can't hear you, Lane, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
I think we just lost. Lane, Lane must have lost connection.
All right, and Kathy's telling us she has a bad internet connection. So, does that mean, Kathy, that you want to say something but you can't? You could write it in the chat and we'll share it with everyone.
Okay, in the meantime, Shoray, I think you had a question.
Um, yeah, the question is, what is the next step? And who will do it?
So I'd like to give the board an opportunity to kind of digest the plan. But we will be re-meeting as a committee to make any changes based on suggestions. I know Lane had asked us to include some specific projects and list some more accountability. She, I know she had mentioned for like collection development, possibly putting in, trying to purchase a certain percentage of diverse or inclusive material. So we'll be taking that feedback, meeting with the group, making any tweaks that are needed to the action items and goals and the the performance measurements. We'll then resend that to the board in, at the January board meeting. We would like to vote to accept the informational aspect of the strategic plan. And we'll be working on the visual layout of that in the time period. Two and two will be creating, is working on our logos. So we would like to use the new branding within that strategic plan. So once the board has accepted this strategic plan, we would then go forward and release this plan fully to the public. And then we would begin to work on the plan and strategize how we will accomplish these goals in the next five years.
Right.
I would personally like to make a report to the board at least once a year with the progress we're making. You know, possibly more often than that, depending on, you know, if we're working on, I say, a specific project, we're working on the outdoor space, for example, that we may be giving you progress reports as the the project is is going on. But this really should be guiding us for the next five years, letting us determine what direction the library is moving and, you know.
I think it's, this is an excellent plan to give us the outline of what the, what we need to be focusing on. I feel the next step, that this does not need to be part of, made part of the plan itself. But this is something that needs to come next is to really define what each one of these things mean. What does it mean to have diversity, equity and inclusion? How does that look like within, in a practical terms? What does community engagement looks like? So, and and then do we do something just for one year and call it diverse? Or engagement? Or are we having a plan that we're gonna go for every year? For some of them might be accomplished in a year or two, some of them might be, need to be there. So it needs to be sort of fleshed out in.
Yes.
Some level. And then that mapped to a timeline and then that mapped to a budget and so on and so forth. So there are several stages that this needs to go through. But as is, as a plan, I think it's nicely done and really focuses on important things that the library needs to focus.
Lane, Lane, are you you back and can you?
I'm back, I'm sorry, I I hit a dead spot.
Now, Lane, go.
I mean, it's just, as I said, I want to thank everyone who had worked hard on this. I know there was a lot of data that was collected from from lots of sources and and really appreciate all the work. I I did think there needed to be a little bit more specifics in terms of how we were gonna meet goals. I I thought it was a little broad in our statements and that there wasn't, but it wasn't necessarily a benchmark that it had been set in terms of implementation. And then, as as Andrew had said, specifically around the capital, I think, for our, for the sake of our public to say what what projects we are focused on for the capital dollars over the next five years, I think is also very important. And to be a little bit more specific on on those fronts. But again, I wanted to thank everyone for the hard work and I think it's a great starting point.
Thank you, I'd like to read out just what Kathy said because she typed something in as well.
Also, I think I was going to read out what Michelle said too, which I'll do, Andrew, because she said, well done, Andrew. And then Kathy said, I want to thank everyone on the committee. It was a great experience working with all of you. Thank you for listening to me and for your support of the team room. So, and as I said, I thank the committee and everyone involved. And, you know, it's really strategic and that's the important thing. And anyway, so we'll see how that goes for for next month. Anyone else on that? So, the next, well, the next, we're gonna go into executive session. But before I get a motion to go into executive session, because I have a feeling that we'll lose some of the audience for that. I want to thank everyone for a great year that we've had and I've had as the board president. I also want to wish everyone happy, everything in all your, merry and happy and sell in a safe and healthy holiday season and New Year. And we'll look forward to seeing everyone in the New Year. So can I have a motion to go into executive session? Somebody?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're returning from the executive session. No action was taken. May I have a message, a motion to adjourn the the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Shoray made the motion. Liz, you want a second? Okay, second by Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy everything. Stay well and stay safe and we'll see you in 2022.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everyone.
Bye bye.
Bye.